There.
Michelle.
Shop the two.
You know that thing?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Everyone, can I have your attention? We're going to start the meeting. Like Big Ben, we want to be prompt. We're good. Okay. The time is now seven thirty PM. This is the December second, twenty twenty one work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall and via Zoom. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so it's not to distract from the business of the meeting. And as always, there will be several opportunities for the public present to be heard, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website. Published within published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November thirty of two thousand twenty one sunshine notice was sent to the record. Ridgewood News and Star Ledger and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. Thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilman Holman.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilsonkey.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you. We're going to start the the work session with what for me is the most is the highlight of of tonight. A very, very, very bittersweet moment. I know for for Councilman Jim Strauss for me and probably for all of us. We are happy to be honoring our colleague Jim Strauss for his lifetime of service, and that's not lip service, lifetime of service. And dedication to the Borough of Allen Dell. I mean, you just you you. This is from the heart, and this is accurate. He has served our community as a zoning board chair, deputy marsh warden and councilman, and has done so much more. He will forever be remembered for his passion and dedication. As a steward and advocate for preserving open space. And the environment and with his focus on our recycling efforts as well. As we were talking, we just kept coming up with more and more that that you've done. We didn't. We couldn't. Make it small enough to fit into the proclamation. His crusade to save what is known as Orchard Common and initiate programs like the Green Team and Goose Patrol will forever be a part of his legacy. At the end of this year, he will be retiring from the council after eighteen years.
Eighteen years, yes.
Eighteen years, right? And he will no longer be joining us at the dais twice a month. He will be missed, and as all of us will say in our own words and via video. Someone else will be in that chair, but your shoes will never be replaced and will never have anyone like you ever.
Thank you.
You have been so much to so many. You have wealth of knowledge, a visionary, a watchful eye, a sounding board, a cheerleader. And most importantly, to me and to many, a friend. The governing body, the residents, the employees in the Borough of Allen Dell in general are all better for having you served, and we all thank you. So I'm going to read a proclamation. I'm going to on behalf of all of us. And and then I'm going to it with something to present to you, and then Amy has something to present to you, and I'm sure we all have some nice things to say to you. We're not going to stop for pictures now because we will have afterwards. We'll have the opportunity to for pictures turn. So without further ado, I'd like to read the proclamation. Proclamation and in honor of Councilman Jim Strauss. Whereas Jim Strauss, a lifelong resident, has continued to make Allen Dell his home along with his wife Peggy Pyle and daughter Emma. And whereas Jim's dedication to Allen Dell started at a young age, when at just sixteen years, he began attending council meetings. Quote, because he wanted to make sure they were working and keeping Allen Dell from being overbuilt and taking down too many trees, unquote. And whereas prior to joining the council, Jim served Allen Dell in various capacities. Such as chairman of the zoning board, deputy marsh warden of the celery farm, and as founder of the Goose Patrol. And whereas on June seventh, two thousand four, Jim was first sworn in to serve on the Allen Dell Council. Continuing his unwavering service to the Borough for the next eighteen years. And whereas in two thousand eight, Councilman Strouch successfully led the effort to preserve two point five acres of Allen Dell's parkland known as Orchard Common. And whereas during his tenure, Councilman Strouch has served on the DPW land use, public safety committees, to name a few. And in two thousand twelve, he was elected by his colleagues to serve as council president, an honor which he held highly and a duty he performed enthusiastically. Whereas Councilman Strouch will will be forever remembered for his passion for improving Allen Dell's recycling program. His commitment to preserving open space and for his vast knowledge of all things Allen Dell. Now, therefore, we, the governing body, on behalf of the residents of the Borough of Allen Dell, on this second day of December, two thousand twenty one. Hereby acknowledge with gratitude, love, et cetera, Councilman Jim Strauss's dedicated service to the Borough of Allen Dell. And wish him continued success in his future endeavors. And so.
I was wondering when the tears were going to start.
So we have this proclamation. We also have the key to the borough. And we all and afterwards, I know we now have Amy wants to say something, and all of us, whoever wants to speak should feel free among on the dais. And then afterwards, we do have in a more informal setting, we're going to we have something to 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 show to you.
Oh.
So Jim, you know, you've done so much that, you know, what Ari just read, it's been unbelievable. But, you know, one of the most profound. Changes that you made in Allen Dell was to save Orchard Common Park, and that would have been condos. That would have been the back of twenty four condos that we would have had in our main. Area of of Allen Dell. And you, it really was a true grassroots effort. You banged on doors and you've got checks, and I'm sure Mayor Barra is going to speak to it, but. I remember that your famous line was, I've taken it to the eighty yard line, and I don't know how else to get it. And you did it. It was really all of you. So we are going to have a plaque made up for Orchard Common Park that is going to read Orchard Common Park. Was saved from development by a grassroots effort led by Councilman Jim Strauss, who served Allen Dell from two thousand four to two thousand twenty one. Really, I mean, I was trying to think back of when we met, and I believe it was in the ANPA days, which half the people here probably don't even know what that is anymore. But I believe it was like the love of nature, the love of Allen Dell and embracing change, but still trying to keep the the. Character of Allen Dell, and that's why I think we connected so many years ago. I remember Emma and Liam were little babies. When we started the endeavor, I think of saving the condos and then. Through stuff with the Passaic River Coalition and the celery farm. I mean, there's just been so many stories. And then I remember when you came up with the idea for the Goose Patrol, and I remember thinking, that's the craziest thing I've ever heard. What is the Goose Patrol, like dogs, whatever? And it has been smashing success. I mean, saving the Borough tens of thousands of dollars per year, and then we brought it up to the high school, and I'll never forget. Because I was in charge of fields for all the years that the goose poop disappeared, just disappeared, and used to always say. When the geese see the dogs, they're they're just not going to come. They're not going to lay their eggs there. I'm like, really? And sure enough, it was. It was unbelievable. So. I'm certainly going to miss you. I'm going to miss your stories. I consider you the Borough historian. Whenever we have a question, and we'll still be calling you, I'm sure. You just know everything about every little piece of Allen Dell. So you'll be forever, you know, in my heart, we will. This is not goodbye for any stretch of our imagination, but. We'll miss you up here in the dais, and I do. I consider you from the bottom of my heart a dear, dear friend.
Well, I'll say something, too. Jim, truly, you are. You're amazing. I said I knew you in Allen Dell, and that was really the ANPA stuff. I didn't really know what was going on, but. I thought this guy's really got great energy, and I can say, you know, getting to know your your wife and Emma and everybody, it's just you guys. Thank you to your family for sharing so much of. Of you with all of us, and it really makes Allen Dell the place that it is. So in addition to everything that Amy and Ari have already said, just thank you so much. You're just a wonderful person. And a great example for all of us and truly giving back to Allen Dell. So thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Liz. Thank you. So.
Yeah, well, we're going to go to I can do it during my committee report.
No, it it.
Why don't you do it now? Okay, so yesterday we had a committee meeting, and it was Jim's as my second on land use, and it's been. This is not the first time we've we've been together on a committee at all. So at the end of the meeting, I just wanted to thank Jim because it was his last meeting with us, and I always appreciated his positive attitude. He always. Always has the same mood. I wish I could do that. And and his only agenda is making Allen Dell a better place. And and so I was grateful for it. I'm envious of of your demeanor at the same time. So maybe I could improve, but seriously. Having lived your whole life in Allen Dell and being so involved your whole life in Allen Dell especially, right? Anybody can sleep here. I knew I could always call on you to tell me what was that property before, and and I would find out exactly in a lot of detail, and I appreciate. And, you know, what happened? Why was this ordinance adopted? Because I was thinking about amending it, but there must have been a good reason for it, and and you would tell me, and you'd always be generous with your time, and. I enjoyed the lunch we had over the summer by the Red Barn, where we talked about another ordinance. So I'm going to miss you, but I'm still calling you.
We all are.
Okay. So thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Jim, I just remember first meeting you. It was like we were old friends. I think we talked for about twenty minutes and got all the history. And I think we're going to miss you up here, and we're going to miss the history. Like I said, everyone said they're going to call you on that. Because you know everything that happens in Allen Dell, it seems, or when it did happen, and you're going to be missed, truly missed.
Thank you.
I wish you the best.
Well, I guess I'm up. So you know, this is a special town, and and you're a huge part of that, having grown up here. I always told my wife when we got married and we moved all the way to Midland Park, I said, this is okay for now, but I want to be back in Allen Dell. Orchard Commons, I remember as a kid stopping to look at the horses there, so I couldn't imagine there being, you know, big condos or whatever. So. For all that and for the special place that you made this, thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. So now I'm going public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public to present to comment. So if there's anyone who wishes to be heard. Mayor Emeritus Vince Barra, please. Come forward.
The only problem I Vince Barrett, Mayor Emeritus, Allen Dell, only problem I have is I saw the agenda. It said I'm limited to three minutes. I can't say hello in three minutes. So I would ask for executive privilege. See the three minutes if need be. I'll try to keep it brief. Jim, what can I say? The people of Allen Dell owe you a debt that they cannot even begin to repay. And the sad part in some respects is there are so many new people in town over these past fifteen, twenty years, and I'm talking about Orchard Commons specifically. That were not here. They have no idea what was going to happen, no idea what would have happened. No idea that they see this beautiful park and what you did by yourself. Now, you had a lot of people that you went out and got, but it was all you. And I want to say a few things. Maybe there are some of them on Zoom tonight, so maybe they'll hear this story, and they'll appreciate. Really more of what that plaque means, and I'm so thrilled, Amy, that that mayor and the council are going to do something like that because Jim deserves. All of that recognition. But back in two thousand six, when I was going to decide to run for mayor and. Liz White was going to run as council for her first elective office, and we asked you to join us on our ticket, and you said, I would love to, and we were so honored that you would because you were running for reelection. And you had such a great reputation. You kind of lifted me up a little bit in the eyes of the of the public. But the first thing you said was, you've got to do something about. This piece of property that's going to be twenty four townhouses. I said, all right, Jim, but we'll talk about it. But Jim went, and as Amy pointed out, he did a grassroots movement, and he went all over town. Got people to support him. What was your email there? Seven hundred, seven fifty, somewhere in that in that range, if my memory serves me right. And Jim then came down Borough Hall. And he had a stack three inches thick of checks. And presented it and said, we have to save this piece of property for open space because he is truly the councilman, the open space champion. And he was scoffed at, and I do not say that lightly, but he was scoffed at. And disrespected quite candidly. And but you know what? That did not stop him. That that only got him a little bit juiced up. So when the election came down in November, Jim said to me, okay, now you're going to be sworn in, and I have a little meeting. I'm going to have a Calvary Lutheran. About this park, this space up here, not a park, it was just. An open, an open pasture, actually, at the time, the Thurston family house with the pasture. And so I went to Calvary Lutheran that night, and there were a hundred people there. The parish hall was bursting at the seams. And Jim gives a presentation and all the people guessed, and so now they all look at me. I'm sitting somewhere down on the side. What are you going to do? I literally had put my hand down for taking the oats, I think, two weeks earlier than that. So I was like, I don't know. We'll work out. We'll think of something. So Jim then went and he got Ella Philippi, who was an avid open space preservationist, Passaic River Coalition. And got Ella to get us an appointment with the DCA Commissioner and the Open Space Trust Fund people. Meanwhile, the developer had gotten his approval from the planning board. They had big. Conduits. They had vehicles, backhoes, bulldozers on the site, ready to start the development. We went down to Trenton. We met with the DCA Commissioner, and I get a call that they have now cut down virtually every tree. On that parcel, and the people in town were outraged. Well, thanks to Jim and and his connections with the Passaic River Coalition. We got the DCA Commissioner on the spot that day, took us upstairs to the to the secret to the treasurer's office. With the open space people and got approval for the funding to purchase the parkland. And from there, we closed. We did Orchard Common Park. And on June fourteenth, we had the dedication. I don't want to say that Jim was emotional. I was emotional. But he was so emotional that day, and I remember the day. It happens to be my wife's birthday. That's why I remember what day it was when we dedicated the park. But people in town who are here. Recognize it. They appreciate it. They knew it could have been there. But the people who have come since. Just I want all of them to visualize what that corner would have looked like, twenty four, the backs of twenty four townhouses.
The backs.
That would have would have been they. That's how you would have been greeted, driving up Franklin Turnpike, coming into Allen Dell. And so many other things that Jim did in terms of open space, but truly Orchard Common Park, I think, stands out. You know, as as really the pinnacle of what he done, what he has done and his and his dedication. And and on a personal note, though, as mayor, you also always had my back. Always had my back, and you know, we had a lot of trials, especially coming in new. A lot of things were going on with transition. And you, though, were always there for me. You always had my back, and I always will remember that, and I will always appreciate it. You're a special man, and I I love you, and I love you as a friend, and I love the man of integrity that you are. You really are. I wish that everybody in Allen Dell could grow up as a young man, as you did, growing up in Allen Dell. And could become the man that you've become. So God bless you, and I. Wish you all the best.
Oh, no, no.
I will not be as long as things. Anyway, I have to pick up on two things that they told. Councilman Councilman O'Toole. Okay, you were dead on about wanting to come back, except Jim never wanted to leave. At one point in his life, he said to me, Mom, you know, I want to grow up. I want to stay my whole life in this town. And I said, that is wonderful. I'm so glad to hear that because I loved Allen Dell. And then he said to me, not that much later, you know, Mom, I told you I wanted to stay in Allen Dell all my life, but I wanted to be in this house. So. So I.
And is that room for both of us?
Was he intended to get us? So you talked about wanting to be in Allen Dell. And the other was Vince, but some of what you talked about about the animosity, and I would go to some of these meetings, not a lot, because I hated to see. The negativity that would come up sometimes. But afterwards, I mean, you talk about Jim as a person of having a stable, you know. Showing kindness and everything to people. People who opposed him, he would say to them, no, let's get together and talk about you accused. And I said to him one time, I said, Jim, how can you have the con in you to sit down with someone who's opposing something that is so wonderful? And it wasn't just one thing, you know, it was it was multiple things that people opposed. And I said, how can you do that? Go and talk to people who are telling you that you shouldn't be do this. And when it's the best thing that could happen. And he said to me, Mom, he said, it's important for me to understand. How the person who is opposing this feels. Why do they feel that way? I want to know. What's behind what they're saying. And you're talking about bringing tears to your eyes. The decency of this person is, I'm sorry, obviously recognized. By so many of you. And as a mother, I'm almost as teary as Jim is when it comes to my children, and. I got to tell you, he's a jewel. Thank you for being my son.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard at this time? Not seeing anyone?
You can't follow them up.
Right. All right. Agenda review. On our regular session agenda tonight, we have minutes of afterwards, we'll have a chance to continue this in a more informal setting. No, I don't. I don't think for the we are we opening up to the public on Zoom?
Well.
During the work.
I think I think we set up this one for that.
Just for this one?
You have about six minutes if you want to use it.
Okay, so yeah, we'll do it. So six minutes. So can you?
Thanks, Marley.
Now, we have, I think, Jim Wright wanted to speak.
Sure. So I think Jim Wright via Zoom. So Tyler, can you patch that in or open it up to him?
You know, Jim's on the air.
Great. So can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jim.
All I wanted to say was, on behalf of everyone who loves the celery farm, thank you, Jim Strauss, for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim Wright. Tyler, anyone else there who wishes to be heard?
Yes, there's somebody else that's raised their hand.
Okay, let's throw caution to the wind and.
It's okay. It's our cousin. It's okay.
Please state your name and your address for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Carlton, you're still muted.
Right, I'm I'm off the blind, so I can't see where it says unmute.
Well, we can hear you and see you, Carlton. Hi, Susan.
There. All right. So I just wanted to. Convey a brief anecdote about Jim and the Goose Patrol. The first year my dog was on Goose Patrol. I had a lot of free time, so we would, and she was young, so we would go to the Crestwood Park, probably. Three, four times a day for a walk. And the first time we encountered geese, she chased the geese. The geese went into the water. And that was that. So we walked up to the high school, killed some time, walked back down. The geese were back out on the grass. We chased them again. They went into the water. And this happened for the remainder of the week. And I, when I spoke to Jim, I was telling him, I was very frustrated that, you know, we were chasing the geese, but they weren't leaving. And he said, well, maybe we need the boats. And I thought, oh, I can't see myself rowing around Crestwood Lake in a boat trying to chase geese. And we went to. Went back to his house, and out of his basement came these two radio controlled AVGP. Boats. And we put batteries in, and we put batteries in the in the control, went to the lake. Annabelle chased the geese into the water. I put the boat in the water. The boat went after the geese. The geese flew out onto the land. Annabelle chased him into the water. They saw the boat coming, and I guess they said, you know, there's a celery farm about a mile from here. And that was the last we saw of those geese for months. And and now I might see geese two days a year at the lake.
And you're there.
The Goose Patrol really was a brilliant idea. It's been incredibly successful, and we owe a lot to Jim for that.
Thank you, Carlton. Great. Thank you. Anyone else from? The public via Zoom that wishes to be heard? Okay, I'm going to quickly get through in the three minutes a quick agenda review. On the regular session agenda, we have minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty one, and June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Work session and regular session for consideration will. As amended, because there was an amendment that came in via Councilman Councilman Holman. Councilman O'Connell was absent from the June twenty fourth meeting, so you'll need to abstain on that one. We'll have public hearing on ordinance twenty one twelve and introduction and first reading of ordinance twenty one thirteen. When we get there, because we're probably going to run out of time. Steve, if you want to speak on twenty one twelve before. We introduce that you can, and Liz, if you want to speak on twenty one thirteen, you'll have the opportunity to do that then. There's been a change to the consent agenda. Resolution twenty one dash two six eight has been pulled, so there will only be four resolutions on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the agenda review? Okay, so I am at seven fifty eight. I would request the motion to adjourn the work session. So move scratch. Great. Second. Thanks, Liz. All in favor? Great. We'll be back in two minutes.
At that time for bathroom, yes.
You have two minutes.
You have two minutes?
Okay. The time is now 8:01. Tyler, are we good to go? Thank you. The time is now 8:01, and this is the December 2nd, 2021 regular session of the Allenville Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall and via Zoom. This time, I ask you to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two more opportunities for the, those present to speak during this meeting, we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Publics, Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year. And copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November 30th, 2021 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. If you would all please join me, rise to salute the flag. Please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman here, Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilman Strauss.
Here.
Holcinski.
Yeah.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you. Public comment on agenda items only. Anyone in the public wish to be heard on agenda items? Not seeing anyone. Approval of the minutes, we are going to request a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2021 work session, June 10th, 2021 regular session, and June 24th, 2021 work session, and June 24th, 2021 regular session, as amended. I would request a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, every, everyone, Michelle, please conduct the roll call. Ed, please abstain from 6:24.
Councilwoman Holman, yes. Councilman O'Connell.
Abstain for the 24th, yes to the rest.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strauss.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Great. Next on the agenda is a second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2112 regarding stormwater control. Steve, you spoke the last time when we introduced the first time, so I don't know what, if you have anything to add, but I want to give you the opportunity.
No, thanks. No, I think, I think we're good. We talked about storm alert, stormwater a lot yesterday, but.
Right.
I think we're good.
Okay.
But thanks for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Michelle, please read the title of ordinance 2112.
Sure. The following ordinance published here with this first read by title only on October 28th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. This is ordinance 21-12. Ordinance of the Borough of Allenville, Burton County, New Jersey, amending and modifying chapter 231. Stormwater Control, Article One, General Regulations of the Borough of Allenville.
Great, thank you. I will open the floor to the public for public comment on ordinance 2112. Not seeing anyone. I would request a council member to make a motion to move to pass and adopt on second and final reading. Ordinance 21-12, notice of same shall be published according to law.
So moves, Sasso.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second, Strauss.
Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman, yes. Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strauss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is introduction of ordinance 21-13 regarding Suez Water. Liz, would you like an opportunity to?
Yes, so 2113 is an ordinance granting consent and permission for Suez Water, New Jersey Inc. to furnish water treatment, storage, and convey, convey service in the Borough of Allenville. And hopefully, everybody had a chance to read the ordinance. It's pretty straightforward. But there were two points that I thought, you know, I just wanted to call out. And the first one was the statement that says the exclusive and perpetual consent and permission to furnish water conveys to the Borough and all residents, businesses, and government buildings therein is granted and given and granted to Suez's successors and assigned, subject to the approval of such consent and permission by the Board of Public Utilities of the State of New Jersey. And I thought that this section was important to note because Hackensack Water became United Water, United Water became Suez, and the BPU is reviewing Suez, New Jersey, becoming the only. So from that perspective, I felt like it's important for us as a borough just to realize that the consent agenda follows through on these, you know, changes pursuant to the BPU's approval. So that was the first one. And then the second thing that I thought was important to call out to everybody was just that the consent granted herein shall be subject to Suez complying all applicable laws of the Borough and/or the State of New Jersey, including but not limited to any and all applicable statutes and administrative agencies, rules and/or regulations, and contingent upon the Borough and Suez executing the agreement of sale between the Borough of Allenville and Suez Water, New Jersey. And this is just important to note as our water committee and our team of consultants are continuing to work on completing the exhibits. You remember this summer, we passed really the bulk of the legal wording of the purchase agreement, and it's just in the exhibits ensuring that those mirror the bid as presented and accepted by the Borough and is properly within legal documentation. And I was thinking, I was doing this during my report, because I wanted to just share, and I don't want to do much of a report, that, you know, as a water committee and with our consultants, we meet weekly, and we have smaller meetings in between getting all the things done, trying to collect easements and do all that background work. So thanks to the team that everybody puts in, but also just for, you know, our council and the residents at large that this is, you know, continues to be a serious under.
Great, thank you for that, for the expanding and expounding on that. So I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 21-13 and set the hearing for December 16th, 2021 at 8:00 PM, or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allenville Municipal Building.
Well, so moved.
Great.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and thereafter conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 21-13, an ordinance granting consent and permission to Suez Water, New Jersey, Inc. to furnish water treatment, storage, and conveyance service in the Borough of Allenville, New Jersey. Councilwoman Holman, yes. Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strauss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone have a question on any items on the consent agenda? Okay, and we are pulling 21-268, as I indicated during the work session. So I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Second?
Second, Strauss.
Thank you. Jim, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman, yes. Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strauss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Committee reports, et cetera. I'm going to go first. In my mayor's report, couple items, Northern Highlands Football Championship. Congratulations to the Northern Highlands Football Team for winning North One Group Four title last week. It was a very emotional game that came down to the last 29 seconds. Unbelievable how many times it went back and forth to the last, almost last play of the game, when Highland scored the championship-winning touchdown. Highlands will now play in the regional title game this Saturday at Rutgers Stadium. We are all very proud of their accomplishments, both on the field and off the field. We'll be cheering for all of them. And hats off to Ramapo under such circumstances to really come out and, and play. So they were all winners. Northern Highlands Referendum. Speaking of Northern Highlands, Superintendent Scott Beckerman, along with representatives from Solutions Architecture, will be making a presentation to the governing body at the next council meeting, the December 16th work session, providing details on their planned educational and capital projects, which will be included in a referendum scheduled for March of 2022. We invite the public to learn about this, and we're all looking forward to it. Upcoming holiday events. On Monday, I had the honor of participating in the Borough and Valley Chabad's Joint menorah lighting ceremony. And both mayors, I spoke when the, both of you, how Mayor Merritt, Vince Barrett started with you. When I was on the council and Mayor, what Mayor Merritt, Liz White continued, and there was a big turnout there on Monday. It was cold night, but a great crowd who joined everyone to celebrate Hanukkah, enjoying latkes and spinning dreidels. Thank you to Rabbi Orenstein and Valley Chabad for organizing, and to Councilman O'Toole, Councilman-elect Suzanne Lovasolo, Ron Kissner, Chief Sherb, OIC Officer in Charge Sergeant Griffith, Officer Stettner and Hill Gardner for participating. A special thanks to Rich McDowell and John Gill for going above and beyond to set everything up and making sure that everyone had a nice time. Thank you to all involved. Tomorrow, December 3rd, the Chamber of Commerce will be having their annual holiday work, starting at 6:00 PM. Go AllenvilleNJChamber.org for all the details upon information of belief. I think Santa's going to be making an appearance at some point. Looking forward to that. On Saturday, December 11th, the Holiday Observers will be having their annual Santa Claus Comes to Town holiday gift distribution in the center of town. Do you remember that as a kid growing up? Yeah, I, I mean, for how many years?
Yeah. Coming on the fire truck.
That's right. Yeah, truly great memories growing up here in Allenville. The Allenville Women's Club is once again selling luminaries to display on driveways and walkways on New Year's Eve to give a bright start to 2022. You can visit their website, AllenvilleWomen'sClub.org for more information. And that is my mayoral report. Councilman O'Connell?
Thank you, Mayor. For public safety, we have a meeting December 7th at headquarters. Calls into the borough as of today was 14,720. 911 calls were 2,114. Fire department calls were 193, and evac was 474. I'd like to thank Mr. Sasso for sending me, Councilman Sasso for sending me a little blurb, I think it was USA Today, about the porch pirates.
Yeah.
Porch pirates, because of online sales and everyone's getting packages, have been taking packages off people's front steps. Made the newspaper. They suggest that you ask a neighbor to grab your package for you, or have it delivered in the back, or delivered sometime when you're home. So keep an eye on that with online sales going up. And I think that's about it, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. Councilman Sasso?
Thank you. It's been suggested to me, my last report was a little long, so I'll make it quick. The land use committee, the land use committee met for the last time this year, yesterday at 8:00 AM. I'm happy to say construction code is going fine. We are, I think I mentioned this last time, we are up to pre-pandemic levels in terms of revenue and permits, and that continues to be, to go well. And I'll say it again real quick, that to me is a lagging, the fact that people, that Allenville is, is building out and renovating, that's a lagging indicator that residents are happy and they want to stay here, and they're going to make their house bigger instead of moving or whatever they're going to do. So I'm happy about that. Property maintenance is going great. The other thing is 5G, the latest technology, I've talked about this a few times. It may come next month, it may come in two years, but it's coming, and it's important that the borough get ahead of it and manage it as best as we can. You can't do everything, but you can do certain things. So we've been talking to an attorney in a firm that specializes in this very sort of thing. It will cost the borough nothing. The applicant, the applicant will pay this person, and then he'll manage it for us and help us craft an ordinance. And we'll probably introduce that in January. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much.
I had more, but that's fine.
What the Water Committee is going to be about 100 more times before the end of the year. We all be happy about that.
It would be easier for you just to tell us when we're not going to be. So I can schedule a little bit of work in that time.
And I gave most of my report, I'll just say that the temporary treatment questions that the OJDP had asked of our permit request for New Street have been responded to, so hopefully that's moving forward. And Allenville Water is in compliance with all rules and regulations, so that's good, but we're just looking forward to the future.
So that's it.
Thank you.
So 220 West Crescent, as I've been mentioning, we are still working through a lot of documents. It is more complicated than the back building, which was 230 to close on, because we do have the municipal portion, and we do have our residential portion. The numbers are coming in, they're trending high. This, as everybody knows, is a tough time to build, so we're just working and looking at all of our options. As I mentioned, we did receive a grant from the New Jersey DEP, so we have to work to actually, now, we worked to get the grant. Now we have to fill out about another 10 pages of paperwork to receive the grant towards the remediation. So we will be working on that in the near future. I wanted to say thank you to our DPW for having a great season with all of our fields. The ARC reached out this past week and noted that John and Dan did a phenomenal job keeping our fields beautiful. And I would also like to shout out to Highlands for one of the most incredible football games that I've ever seen in my life, and I've seen many. They did a phenomenal job, and good luck, good luck on Saturday. Yep, that's it for me.
Great, thank you.
Sir. So the Administration, HR, and Finance Committee met last just before Thanksgiving on that agenda where a few personnel matters, review of some old capital ordinances, some day-to-day housekeeping items, such as our banking services and borough's time and attendance system. And Liz was just telling me this afternoon, the finance isn't exciting. So probably the most surprising thing on the agenda was that the 2022 budget worksheets have already been distributed to department heads, which is when you thought it was safe to go back in the water.
And who says we don't live?
Yeah. It was a pretty productive meeting. I just was able to set up a meeting this evening for Monday. We have a couple of things to discuss before our next meeting.
Thank you. And for the very last time, truly bittersweet, Councilman Jim Strauss, you have a report you'd like to give?
Thank you, Mayor Bernstein. This won't be my last time, December 16th.
True.
Though I'll be zooming in. But I would like to defer my DPW, my final DPW report to the December 16th meeting. But if I may use this final minute of this meeting to thank all of you, the kind words that you said. The feeling is truly mutual. I do believe that I was fortunate to be born and raised in Allenville, and that I had the opportunity to do all these great things with all these great people. I believe that we, this mayor and council, are building upon the shoulders of past mayors and councils. My basketball coach, growing up, became a mayor of Allenville, Mayor Redfitch Patrick. He was instrumental in saving the celery farm, as was my insurance agent, Styles Thomas. There's a reason why we are what we are, and, and we need to thank the past, we need to look to the future. And, you know, with every minute of my waking moments, I'm looking at how I can make Allenville a better place. And in doing so, Burton County, New Jersey, America, and the world. You know, we can get through this, we can, you know, make the world a better place if we just keep on the positive side of the road. So with that, I'll stop. And thank you, Art, and everybody, thank you. And thank you, Art and everybody. Thank you. Say you got a time. Bedtime is eight twenty two.
Well, given that preemo by Jim, it's tough. I have about a minute before. You probably know that two twenty, two thirty is in a very formative stage again, particularly with respect to two twenty. In addition, all the ad hoc meetings we have, we probably for what now two years had standing committee meetings every Tuesday. And not to be outdone, someone on the water utility side has decided that in addition to all the ad hoc meetings we have. Will have standing meetings. So both of those are proceeding in earnest. And as was mentioned. We took a procedural step this evening in the introduction of the ordinance, which will be presumably adopted at the next meeting. And which will allow the process to continue forward with the successful referendum. Beyond that, working with the Public Safety Committee on certain promotional matters that are. In a little bit of a state of flux with Mr. Kissner on contract negotiations, particularly with our white collar unit. And I want to mention a litigation. The borough has recently been sued by a. An outfit out of South Jersey, I think the Cherry Hill area, and this comes under the heading of Oprah requests. And the, the requestor is seeking the telephone or the email addresses. Of all of the residents who have asked the borough to provide informational material with respect to borough happenings. So I mean, a very useful product to keep the constituency advised of what's going on is for us to be able to email to residents. When they provide email addresses and provide them with information. And I would think it's a rather fundamental part of government operations to be able to do that. Makes this governing body, you know, more effective in communicating. The requestor has sought. The turnover of those email addresses with the consent of the governing body. We are filing an objection because we do not believe that the residents provide email addresses to the borough. So that we can turn them over to third parties for whatever use they may seem fit. And if this door is opened, I think it's the position of the governing body that the next requestor could be business solicitations. It really would be opening the Pandora's box here. So a decision, we believe in the public interest of all concerned, then I commend the governing body for this. But we have been authorized to file an answer and to contest the turnover of the email addresses as being something. That is. Is really protected and should not be turned over to a requestor, you know, absent a court order. So we have a response due in that case on December seventh. Stay tuned. We'll see what a Superior Court Judge in Hackensack thinks about the issue. But I think that to the credit of the governing body, this was a standard fight issue in the interests of the residents. Beyond that, Mr. Kissner and I, certain land use and property matters. And I think that has been a busy two weeks, but Jim, I do want to join in. And everyone else in extending my congratulations to you and best wishes. Even though I used to come up to Crestwood in the nineteen sixties, you know, to go swimming in the summer months. I don't have the historical background of the council members with respect to Allendale. But I certainly always view you as the historian on the governing body. And it's not just scrolls down memory lane, but I think very often the decisions that are made here, you gave context to. You gave background and context and it only made for better decisions of the governing body. And in doing that, I have to say that you have always been an absolute gentleman and a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. Thank you, Ray. And I do want just to add on to what Ray said that, and he mentioned it, that we were unanimous, man council were unanimous that. Objecting to the Oprah request and opposing the request to turn over the information was the right thing to do for our residents. And so that's now it's taking its next steps. Great. Thank you, Ray. Michelle. There you are.
I, I don't have a report tonight, but I, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Clerk's Office, thank you, Councilman Strauss for all your support. And for me personally, always being patient with me as I still continue to learn this role after almost two years. But it was a pleasure working with you and we're going to miss you and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. Ron.
Think the whole D P W in itself personally. You're a good guy. You always say hello. Never ask, you always check to see how the family's doing first. You can't run too right now. Borrow you after family's doing first. And even some of the rumpier guys got D P G, they will love. You can't figure your, your. Best I can say where I come from, you're a good guy.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, anything to report?
Nothing to report, but I want to thank Jim. I never worked with you directly on a committee, but you've always been a gentleman and very positive person.
Thank you. Public comment? Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Yes.
Actually, I have a question about the, the emails.
Sure. Yep.
I think emails really.
Although we all know you, please. Your, your name and address for the record so that the record can be.
My name is Peggy Pyle and I live at thirty three Woodland Ave, Allendale, New Jersey. And do we have privacy policies? In Allendale for our email? Or opt-ins?
Yeah, we do have a handbook which has a privacy policy. This is an issue that is, is actually in the courts in multiple places. This particular litigant has. I guess I'll call it a shotgun request throughout the state in, in, you know, several counties, seeking this type of information. I think this is ultimately going to be disposed of at a higher court than just a trial level court in Hackensack or any other county.
Yeah.
And the notion is that, that. The borough has, I don't want to say solicited, but secured these email addresses for a very limited purpose. In order to disseminate public information and keep the electorate informed as to what's going on in their community. And, and Michelle can supplement this, but, but actually. We indicate to the residents that this is not going to be given to third parties. So we, I think as the mayor said, the feeling of the entire governing body was that there is a duty. To one, protect that which we said we would protect, but secondly, that if you turn this over. Less residents will want to communicate directly with the municipality. We won't be able to information share as effectively. And this governing body has always taken pride in being open and forthcoming with information, usually in multiple ways. And if this information is open, then I think less people are going to provide those email addresses and as a result, we're less communicative.
Yeah, definitely. I'm in publishing, so we're constantly in marketing. So we're always looking for emails, but I'm also very. Very concerned about privacy. So if there's some, something that we should be doing as a town that sets ourselves up to block people. In the future, which I mean, I totally support what you're doing, but is there something more that we can do to stop it? Well, I, I think we're, we're. Going to court and challenging it.
Right.
And hopefully, right.
Right. So I mean, the first line of, the first line of defense was that we objected. We said no.
Yeah.
And then they threatened the lawsuit and we, that this is where it's going to take us. And we agreed that it was the right thing to do. If the judge ultimately rules that we have to turn it over, then we'll, we'll deal with that fate at a later date.
Okay.
But we are, we were adamant, unanimously adamant that this was the right thing to do. And that those that turned over their email addresses to us so that we can provide information to you. Should then, should not be something that we give to someone else.
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? So before I adjourn. Once we're done, we have refreshments. More for Jim and we have a video montage. And so what I want to do is I want to thank Tyler Yakarino and John Gill, who don't get enough thanks. This goes on because it largely because of their efforts, the fact that we could do this, the fact that the people from wherever they are could zoom in. The video montage that you're going to see later was. John, what you did with little notice and little time putting together, I've seen a sneak preview. It's wonderful. So it's the two of you who don't get a lot of the praise in front of the camera. I want to, I want to make, give you your due praise now. Thank you very much. Request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved, O'Connell.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
We'll be ending the Zoom meeting now, but the video in honor of Jim will be made available at a later date, so you can do it at that time.
So we can't watch the video?
Jim, this is a bitter, bitter, bitter sweet moment. Saying goodbye to you on the council is something that I have not been looking forward to, but I knew at some point this day would come. I could not begin to recount your accomplishments and all the things that you've done for the borough. The crusade you led with others in two thousand and eight to save the property we now know as Orchard Commons. From becoming twenty four townhouses will go down in Allendale's history and lore as one of its finest moments. When I pull out of Arcadia Road on to Franklin Turnpike every day, I thank you for your vision and your heroic efforts. There will be others who will occupy your chair on the dais, but nobody will do it with the historical perspective. The forward looking vision and the passion that you have graced us with for eighteen years. You are in a class unto itself. I've been part of the Borough Council for fifteen years and you've always been someone I could look to for guidance and wisdom. I will truly miss that. So we're not saying goodbye. You're not getting off that easy. I'm wishing you congratulations on a job so well done. And I'm thanking you for all that you have done for me, the council and for the borough. I am proud and honored to call you my colleague and my friend. Thank you, Jim.
Jim, what is there to say but thank you? Thank you for eighteen years of service and dedication to Allendale. Thank you for your willingness to share your encyclopedic knowledge of Allendale's past. And thank you for your guidance and friendship during my time on the council. I wish you nothing but the best in the future.
Here we are in beautiful Orchard Commons Park.
The park that you saved through a grassroots effort with a stack of checks like this from the whole entire community.
This place is truly an amazing place in Allendale for people to come, for there to be birdhouses, for there to be projects for Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. It's just in such an incredible addition to the community.
And don't forget doggies too, because we allow dogs in Orchard Common Park. So Jim, we are so grateful for all of your work on the council. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And enjoy retirement from the council.
Yes, the community is truly blessed. You have been such a great example of someone who has loved the community and given to this community. For more than the eighteen years that you've been on the council. So thanks so much and we look forward to having lots more fun with you.
Hi, Jim. I can remember when we met at a Republican Club meeting. You shook my hand. You introduced yourself as Jim Strauss, Councilman, and your eyes lit up when you knew I was married to Terry. And I think we've become friends ever since. And being a colleague with you on the council for five years now. Your knowledge and history of Allendale is second to none. You will certainly be missed. Although someone may sit in your seat, no one can take your place. I wish you the best in everything you do, health and happiness, and do not change your number. Because we will be calling on you for the history of Allendale. Thank you for everything you did for Allendale, Jim. God bless.
Councilman Strauss. I'd rather call you Jim. Jim, in six terms on the council now, coming up on your eighteenth year, that's an incredible run. It's been my pleasure to serve with you for some of that time. It's been a pleasure to be on your committees and you've been great, a great second on mine. You're, you've always been my go to guy, having lived so long, your whole life, I think, in Allendale. And you're the voice of reason. You always have a positive attitude. You never have an agenda except what's best for Allendale. And what you've done for Allendale environmentally and open space, well, that will live on much longer than any of us. And you're leaving Allendale, as you leave the council, you're leaving Allendale a much better place. So I want to thank you for that and I want to thank you for all the times that I've called you. As I've thought about adopting an ordinance or introducing an ordinance or modifying an ordinance. I said, let me talk to Jim first because he'll remember why that ordinance was there in the first place or why we did that in the first place as a governing body. And you've always been there for me and I appreciate it. I'm going to miss you on the council, but I look forward to seeing you around town. Thanks, Jim.
Hey, Jim, thanks for everything you've done for the D P W. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thanks, Jim.
Hey, Jim, on behalf of the Borough Hall, I'd just like to say it was a pleasure and an honor to have known you and worked with you. And thank you for everything you've done. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Jim.
Happy retirement.
Hi, Councilperson Strauss. On behalf of the entire men and women of the Allendale Police Department, I'd like to thank you for your eighteen years of dedication to the borough of Allendale as a council person. We wish you best in your retirement and wish you good luck. Thanks again for your service.
Hey, Jim, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you as your time as Councilman here in our hometown of Allendale. Your efforts have resulted in a much greener and more eco-friendly town that we are currently benefiting from and residents will for years to come. Your retirement is very much well deserved, but we know that your heart will always be here in Allendale and we're forever grateful.
Dear Councilman Strauss. As one of Allendale's own, we know of your personal love and commitment to our little town. Yet, our biggest thank you goes to you for your unwavering service throughout the years to our community. Wishing you a happy retirement from the Allendale Women's Club.
Hey, Jim, I just wanted to thank you for all of your years volunteering in Allendale. You have made our community a much better place because of your efforts. I enjoyed serving on the council with you and you were a terrific co-chair of the Water and Sewer Committee where we waded through some deep issues. I want to thank your family for sharing you with us all these years and I wish you all the best in years to come. Take care, Jim.
Councilman Strauss, I wanted to thank you for your years of service to Allendale. Your contributions and successes are many, not the least of which was your almost single handedly saving of Orchard Commons Park. Your commitment to our parks and facilities will be realized for years to come. Your historical knowledge of our infrastructure has been a true asset in many of our road and water projects. And on a personal level, I wanted to thank you for your support and shoulder when I came onto the council as well as while I was mayor. You were always willing to consider new ideas. I'd like to thank Peggy and Emma for sharing you with us and I wish you all the best as you step off of council.
Hi, Jimmy. I just wanted to send a short video to tell you how proud I am of you. Hi, Jimmy. I just wanted to send a short video to tell you how proud I am of you. You're the best brother anybody could ever wish for, but you're also an amazing towns person for Allendale. The work that you have done, the passion, the love and the effort that you've put into everything that you've done and accomplished for Allendale is just amazing. It's a long way from when we were kids to the talented, hard-working adult you are now. And again, just super proud of you. Thanks for everything you've done for the town that I still call home, even though I'm living up here in the Berkshires now. Love you. Bye.